It's 6:30, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Files and manifests are going around. Do we have any need for an initial non-public session?
No.
Okay. We're gonna move right into opening public comment. Anybody would like to take this opportunity?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott Baldrer. I live at 13 Carson Drive. I've been a resident of Northwood for the last 13 years. I was a member of the school board for three years, chair for the last two. I'm here because tonight you're gonna be asked to modify a policy regarding one of the athletic teams. I was on the committee and part of the school board when those policies were written. You can tell because I don't find it silly that my name is on the bottom of the man of the policies. We have 22 boys that tried out for the soccer team this year. Policy states you can carry 18 and three alternates, instructional players. We also have another policy that states that if cuts need to be made, players cannot play more than one sport, therefore reducing spots for another, on another team by one boy taking two spots. We're in a situation where we have more players than we are supposed to have with 22, so cuts need to be made. It's an unfortunate situation because the best player on the boys' soccer team is also the best player on the cross-country team, who is also a straight A student and a role model for every student at this school. Not my son, I'm not related to him, it's just the truth. Both teams would benefit by having this boy on the team. I'm a firm believer that kids need to be cut from the team because too many kids is just as detrimental as having not enough kids on the team. Earlier this summer, the coaches threw down a gauntlet for the kids trying out for the soccer team and gave them goals, and many kids worked hard all summer long to be able to achieve those goals, one of which was running a nine-minute mile. Everywhere I drove in town, there were kids running up and down Bow Lake Road, around the soccer field, around all the fields, walking Co-Brown on the track, working to improve their time in their running so that they could make the team by running a nine-minute mile.
One more minute, Scott.
Pardon me?
One more minute.
I'd like to see kids be rewarded by making a team rather than just accepting everybody as we typically do. There are two policies, one of which the coach and the athletic director are gonna ask you to alter, which is the amount of kids on the team. They'd like you to make a waiver to carry 22. I would prefer to see you modify the other policy and grant a waiver for this boy to play on both teams after we cut down to the appropriate number of soccer players. It sets the least dangerous precedent and is the policy that would be least effective in the long run anyway. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else like to speak?
My name is Shirley Glennon. I live on Angela Drive in Northwood, and I wanted to make a comment because I know that there will be some discussion about what's happening with kindergarten in the future. I have some personal and professional feedback on this. Personally, we moved just after my son started first grade from a district that had full day, and he made huge strides between phonics and literacy in that first year, having full-day kindergarten. And I found that when he started first grade, he would be pretty far ahead of a lot of his peers. So I think personally I saw what an impact that can have. And I also wanted to make some notes based on some professional feedback that the National Education, or National Education Association has noted that having full-day kindergarten closes achievement gaps, promotes academic and social success. And studies at the University of Virginia that were updated from 2014 show particularly large gains for students entering with low literacy levels, which is what I also experienced personally, and that it produces greater learning gains per dollar than class size reduction and inclusion interventions. So it's also a profitable measure. So just to recap, socially and emotionally, I think it really sets students out for success because they get the amount of time in the classroom and the experience throughout the day to really be ready to enter first grade, ready to learn, and not need the extra support to get them up to speed and to set an emotional strength and confidence and be able to handle the full day when they get to first grade and have those academic expectations because they get the social time in the classroom in kindergarten. And that's a huge part of kindergarten, to make sure we have time for that. And that's basically the point I wanted to make. The National Education Association, as far as cost, finds that investment in early, quality early childhood programs generates returns of three to one or even higher, which translates to $3 saved for every dollar invested. An early investment in children's social, emotional, and intellectual skills means lower grade retention and dropout rates for students later in life. And this was cited to the Economic Policy Institute and Committee for Economic Development. So I'm speaking from a personal experience with my own child and student and from a professional level in our business. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Tiffany Fuller, and I also just wanted to make a comment about full-day kindergarten. I'm a parent of a third grader here at Northwood Elementary. I do not have a child that would benefit from full-day kindergarten, but like Ms. Glennon, I did have a child attend full-day kindergarten, and I personally saw the benefits of a full-day kindergarten program. And I was actually gonna say something, saying specifics you said, so I don't need to now.
You can repeat them.
Okay, so, the National Association of Education, they, you know, I agree with the National Education Association that full-day programs close the gaps for minority and low-income families by providing a solid foundation that focuses on academics, social, and emotional success. I saw this firsthand with my child going through full-day kindergarten. He was better prepared for first grade, due in part to the structure and foundation he received in full-day kindergarten. He learned in ways that promoted, you know, he played in ways that inspired him to want to learn, and the curriculum at this particular school district did it in a way where they integrated STEM, even at the kindergarten level, which I found amazing, and I would love to see that here. The teachers here in Northwood have been amazing, but I have to admit, when we transferred from the Dover School District to Northwood, some of the work my son spent time completing in first grade was work he had already done in kindergarten in Dover. My point being, as someone new to a school district, the curriculum fell behind and delayed, and that was disappointing. So, obviously, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm also a state of New Hampshire employee, and I understand budget constraints. So I'm just asking for the board to consider some options for full-day kindergarten.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, excuse me, I'm Lucy Lovato, and I just have a question, and I'm not sure if this is the correct setting for the question, however...
We don't have discussions, you can talk, and you can pose a question, but it's gonna be rhetorical for the moment.
Right, okay, so, you know, the weather's been kinda hot the last week and today, you know, like the last, however, since school started. The upstairs is quite warm, and I'm just speaking as a parent. My children have said that it's very hot, and so, and some of the classrooms do not have fans, and I was wondering if there's anywhere in the budget that could allow for purchase of fans for the upstairs classrooms because of the, how hot it gets. I mean, it's miserable, and I know that when I get hot, I'm more concerned about getting cooled off than learning anything, so is that something that could be done?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Any board members like to take this opportunity for public comment?
I would. Two things. First off, I want to address busing in general, or a couple of issues surrounding busing. I have met with a couple of residents, actually, and talked to another resident, and Ms. Delisado and I, assuming, looking at all of the information in front of me, that, we'll talk about that later. One of the things I want to bring about busing is that it was kind of interesting to find out that one of our sister schools in the same district that we are, with the same superintendent and business administrator that we have, has exactly the same problem that we do, and that is they're missing a bus driver. So they have cut down one bus. It's a big difference between them and us. In their case, they're saving, they're being reduced $183.24 each busing day. In our case, so far, not a penny. I really think that should be discussed. I know that Ms. Hartford brought that up in the last meeting. I think it's a very good point, and it's just something I like to be quiet and look into, and I think that's something we have to discuss. $183.24, five days a week, et cetera, is a lot of money over the course of time. The other thing I would like to say, I'm really pleased with the parents that came in and have a problem with busing, and they want to address it, and to be very, very honest, I think all of the three parents that I've talked to are, actually, one is grandparents, are being very reasonable. The only thing that bothers me, and it really bothered me the last episode of busing that we went through a couple of years ago, I'm just astounded how busing seems to be a much bigger issue to them than the fact that only 30% of our third grade and 32% of our fifth grade are proficient in math. I don't understand that, and I don't understand why there's not 100 parents there, out there in the audience complaining about that. That's just the way I look at it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Tim, what was the dollar figure per day?
I think it's $183.24.
For a week?
No, day.
That they're saving.
The credit was for 75% of the contract.
75%, it's $183.24, and I believe 24 cents. I'm within pennies, so please don't exact, but I'm within pennies.
I didn't figure out theirs.
It's a substantial amount of money over two months.
Any other public comment?
I would just like to say, I am all for full-day kindergarten. I've had a child that's done both. We moved into this district after having my oldest son have full-day kindergarten, but I have to say that the teachers here at Northwood School also did a wonderful job because I also have a son that went through half-day kindergarten, and he tests better and everything than my older son. So you have to look at your children, too, and everything like that, and how they are in the classroom, and I will agree that the, my older son transitioned to first grade better, I think because he had the full day and everything like that, but I think that the teaching staff here does a wonderful job also, but I'm for full-day kindergarten because I've seen it, I've seen it work also.
Thanks. Any others?
Something, just to kinda tack onto something that Tim said. We have seen some advances in some of the classes and some of the subjects, which I think is great. I'd like to commend the teachers who saw increases in scores, I think that's fabulous, and not one to beat a dead horse on a vote that's passed, but I think an opportunity was lost recently to have a discussion about what's important and what we need in this school. I think there was a knee-jerk reaction when it came to rejecting the school counselor vacancy that we had, so I think that that money could have been better used to get not a full-time, but a fuller-time curriculum director. We've shuffled money in other ways. I don't see why money couldn't have been shuffled in that way. I think it's something I'd like to see be part of a larger discussion during the budget, so I just wanna put that out there.
I mean, it's my understanding that we can't, no means no. We got a three-fifths petition voted down.
You can do two days a week if you choose.
That's it, this year.
This year.
This year.
Can I speak to that, please, about the...
Unless anyone has an objection? Sure, go for it.
The school counselor issue was huge in my mind. The kids that come here, especially in middle school, are living a life that we don't know. We don't know what's, what they're living. They come here, and this may be the only type of environment they have, and for one person to have to deal with the kindergarteners who are just being maybe identified as needing extra help or special ed, and then the older children who are dealing with social issues and being in middle school and all that comes with middle school, they need that person. And my children have benefited greatly from the counselor upstairs in the higher grade, in the higher grades. So I have seen it work. I have gone from my younger son would cry and not want to come to school, and the only way that we could get him to come to school was so that he, excuse me, if we had him speak to the counselor the very first thing in the day, check in with her, and then continue on throughout the day. Now, that's a personal thing, it doesn't happen with every child, however, there are those children that I would see frequently with my son in the same position, and it wasn't just one or two. It was more than you can count on two hands. So, yeah, it might have saved money in the short run, but in the long run, it would, it was, you're saving a dollar to spend 10 down the road. So I do not agree with it being a knee-jerk reaction. As far as the parents are concerned, everyone I spoke to was in full agreement that that counselor was needed.
Thanks.
Just to be clear, it was not a budget-saving reason for that. That was not the reason for that vote, and I don't think that was what was behind it at all. And I respect everything that she said. I don't disagree with what she's saying, but I'm saying we have a counselor. Strafford makes do with one, I don't see why we can't.
Usually we reserve this for the board, so I'd like, if anyone else on the board liked to talk first, and then, if not, does anybody mind if...
I just got a couple of things on a counselor. And many hats that I wear, one of them is being a police officer, and having that one-on-one relationship with a guidance counselor, especially the middle school guidance counselor, is very helpful because, I mean, they have a duty to report, but, I mean, these kids, it's hard for them to approach a teacher or a principal because they think of them as authority figure. A guidance counselor is kinda like that doctor-patient relationship that they can, you know, they can confide in and talk to them, and if it meets the element that you, you know, you shall report, they give us a call, but if it's something that, hey, I need to talk to mom and dad about, and, oh, 'cause this kid is having certain type of issues, or I need to let a teacher know, you know, that's what, you know, guidance counselor's for, and I'm fully in support. And I do agree with Bree that, you know, if there's something that we wanna look into in the budget, and maybe nix the guidance counselor next year, and maybe like a family liaison that some schools have, absolutely, but I totally agree that we needed it, it was anticipated, and it should be in there.
Thanks. I think everybody who wants to talk has talked, so...
So we can talk again?
No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking the board, I guess. I'd rather not, but unless the board really wants to go that way. You guys wanna keep the public, public open?
I think there's people that wanna talk, so, yeah, I'm all here.
Yeah, I guess.
You guys wanna continue public comment or move on?
I would like to just, you know, I think the discussion, I'm sorry, you were looking at me.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I think Mr. Baldrer had something, too, also.
So, I've listened to all aspects, and I believe that this school board needs to look at where do most spend their money, or where to best spend their money. So a family has an X amount of money coming in, and let's say it's $10,000, and they have to make decisions as to how to best spend that. We don't, and I don't think we will have an unlimited amount of money. We have a new assistant principal whose background, and I think his previous job before coming to here was in guidance counseling. There is no question, we need a guidance counselor in the upper grades. I see the value for that, I understand the value for that, and I never argue whether we should or not. I just think that we threw away a golden opportunity to reuse that money in a little bit of a different direction that would aid in the education of our children. That's the way I felt, and it's the way I still feel, is that, I didn't wanna save anything. I didn't wanna not have a guidance counselor and not spend that money. That was not the issue. The issue is clearly, could we have spent that money wisely, more wisely, in benefiting the students in the school? Thanks.
Agreed.
All right. Well, Scott, you wanna have a very quick response, 'cause I know you were waiting. No, one. You already had three minutes.
All right, it's me again. To the outside public, it looked like a hijacking of the process when the school board, in a 2-2 tie, tried to eliminate or not approve the position of the person who was brought forward as a guidance counselor. Once a person is brought forward, it's not a, it's not a question of is the position needed, it's a question of is that person the right person for the job? If the position needs to be eliminated, eliminate it the right way. Go through the budget process and eliminate the position. If you don't hijack the process and vote no on someone to try to not have a position. Tim's big on numbers. I like Tim, that's nice. You always know where Tim stands because there are numbers. The website says one for 500, but if you wanna use all the numbers, it also says one for 300 for middle school, and the American School Counselor Association says one for 250, and best practices is one for 225. So if you're gonna talk about numbers when you talk about counselors, use all the numbers, not just the ones that fit.
Thank you, Scott. All right. We're gonna move on with school business, guys. I'm gonna close public... We're done with the opening public comment, I've crossed it off, okay. Minutes is next. Motion to approve our minutes.
Second.
Which, all of them?
August 18th.
August 18th. Any discussion on these? No? None? All in favor of approving these?
I have a couple of changes.
You have a couple of changes, all right. Please let us know what they have.
At the bottom of page three, I had motion passed unanimously, five to zero, and it should have been four to zero.
I didn't even see that.
That was line number 45. And on line number 242, I, the sentence starts with, "Miss Whitmore transfers are made." It should say, "Miss Whitmore said transfers are made." And that's it.
All right, thanks. All right, all in favor of approving these minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, okay.
Four, four, zero, one, I believe. We do have minutes for the special meeting as well?
Non-public.
Motion to approve...
Oh.
Oh, yeah, motion to approve non-public minutes.
These are non-public minutes on page 21?
Yeah.
I'll second that. Any discussion on these?
We could actually go back to the last minutes, there's one more typo on page, or on line 767. It's Joe Gunter, and it's town administrator, not town manager, too, if you wanna be exact.
All in favor of approving the non-public minutes of August 18th? No one is?
Aye.
Sorry.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? I believe it's four, zero, one again. And...
August 22nd.
Motion to approve minutes from August 22nd.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you for caring, for taking.
Yep. Those are the minutes. Ms. Young, you have the floor.
All right. Good evening. So you have my written report. I did wanna just let everybody know, 'cause I know it was the source of some stress, that drop-off and pickup has been going really well. We've been getting buses out. I think our latest time was, well, the first day was a little late, just 'cause we had a bunch of kids who didn't know a bus they were riding, but since we've gotten into the swing of things, our latest time has been 229, so it's been pretty good. And parents and kids have been handling it well to drop off one place in the morning and pick up somewhere else in the afternoon, so that's been going well. Staffing, we continue to have an opening. We did interview for a Tudor for New England Center for Children Partner Program and did not have any applicants that met our criteria, so we have reposted that. We had two very successful staff days before school opened. We did a lot of work around school climate and sort of introducing ourselves, setting expectations, and setting tone. And I also wanted, so at the bottom of my, the first page of my report, I have sort of the two major instructional areas that we'll really be focusing on this year, making sure that students are productively engaged during academic time, and making sure that students understand the purpose of what they're doing or learning. And I just wanna be very clear that we're not focusing on those things because they have been absent or insufficient. We're focusing on those things because you can always do better, and those are two things that will provide a lot of leverage in all instructional areas. Wanted to thank people for food, we ate very well, so thank you to the PTA, the school board, NSBA, sports staff, and all who contributed for a potluck lunch. We have done a survey about the first two days, and actually, the opening week or so of school, and we will have data from that survey for you for the next board meeting. Adrian put that together. I'm gonna skip over smarter balance, 'cause we'll talk about that in a minute. For technology, seventh and eighth graders are up and running with their netbooks. I did wanna mention that the addendum that he thought he would have ready for you tonight, he is not ready with, it's been a really busy opening for school, so he will have that for the next packet. He is waiting for a final approval of the technology plan so he can submit to the state, so I'm hoping that you'll make a decision on that tonight. Other upcoming things, NWEA testing begins next week, and Ames Web testing will begin the week after that. MMS, we've had some issues with MMS classes, and then MMS interfacing with our lunch accounting, so the lunch piece is fixed, and MMS should be fixed soon, it's just been kind of a data entry issue, getting, finding the time to get all that done. And then I did have a request, two requests for the board to consider. One is that we do have 22 boys who have signed up for the soccer team, and Mike Brecker and I talked about it, where he can carry 21 per policy. It didn't seem fair to cut just one student, so he said that he is fine, the coaches are fine, there's enough uniforms, there's enough room on the bus, so he requested that you consider allowing 22 students to play. So that's one, and then I also wanted to ask about, do you want me to pause, and you can talk about that one first?
Let's just continue up and roll.
I was gonna say, is it a request just for a waiver for this year, is it a request to change the policy?
I believe it's just a...
Not a request to change the policy, it's just a request to waive it for this season.
Let you finish up, then we'll come back and do a discussion for this stuff.
And then the second thing that's come up, at our last meeting, you had approved the stipends out of REAP for the building leadership team, and I had presented it at that time as teachers on the building leadership team, and we've actually had some paraprofessionals express interest. So I would like the board to consider allowing one of those $800 stipends to be used for a paraprofessional representative on the building leadership team.
All right, so, yeah, let's go through these, I guess, I assume we can do this quick. So the technology plan, he needs a formal approval from the board for that in order to submit to the state, so, anybody like to move that?
Motion to approve the technology plan submitted by Mr. Hartford.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that?
So, the technology plan hasn't changed, we still don't have any, any financial aspect to it.
It sounds like he's adding an addendum to it, but he still needs to submit the base of it to the state without that.
Submit the base of it to the state without any financials in it?
I think so. I assume so.
I don't, I don't really understand it. I'm trying to, but, I mean, some time back, I think the board, maybe I'm mistaken... I think the board, maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought the board had expressed an opinion that we would like to see some sort of a financial amount. And we all know, I think all five of us understand, that it's only his best guess. He doesn't know, we don't know. But at least it's something to kind of direct us as we go forward with the, with the technology in the school as to what it's going to take to get to where our technology professor feels we should be in a year, in two years, in five years, in 10 years. And I'm, so I'm very uncomfortable approving a technology plan that doesn't have that. I think that's a very important part of the whole equation. So that, you know, we can explain that, the town can look at that, those few that want to, want to see the information and understand where we're going.
I don't disagree. I mean, I want to see that as well. I just don't know that we need, that's a requirement for the plan that gets submitted to the state, that's all.
I'm not saying it's a requirement for the state. I'm saying it's a requirement. I thought it was a requirement of the school board.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Can we, can we approve it that he can, can send it to the state, but that we, like, within, like, I mean, because it is a busy time. Well, if, as long as the state approves, as long as the state is okay with taking it without that, that money in there. I mean, I guess that's the thing, too. But then say within, you know, then, within the next two board meetings, we'd like to have the, what we requested.
I'm, I'm not picking on the state, but I think their expectations are far less than maybe ours should be. I'm not saying what ours are, just what, what I think they should be.
It'd be a very high-level thing that the state is requesting, and we're requesting specifics.
Right, you know.
I believe it, I believe at this point, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I, I don't think it would matter to get that from Steve, put it on your next agenda inclusively, including that in it, and then making a, a motion at that point.
Would be comfortable with that.
I don't believe another two weeks is, is going to make or break this plan. So I, I would suggest doing that so the board's comfortable with it, but.
Okay. You okay with, with throwing your motion?
Yes, I would throw.
With that? So we'll expect to see that?
But to ensure that the financials are there, because we had this last meeting, we had the last meeting before that, that we wanted. So if we had to use the CIP or whatever we had to use, if we needed money, two years, three years, five years.
I don't expect to hold him to it. I just would, he's our professional. I'd like some idea of what his expectations are to get this school to where he thinks it should be down the road. That's all.
Yep. So I think you have your answer then, as far as what you need from there? Great. Onto the soccer, the waiver of the policy for the boys' soccer team?
Motion for a waiver for 22 kids to be on, to dress for the soccer team, I guess, is...
So there's multiple angles here with this.
Just for the year, though.
Let's just second it first to get, to open the discussion.
Is that the right way to put it?
Well, I believe what they're asking for is a additional instructional player. Right now, they're allowed three instructional players on the team by, by policy. They would like to have four, so that they can have one more and...
So would be waiving your policy for this particular instance, the soccer, boy soccer team for this season only?
Right.
Waiving the policy for the boy soccer team for the 16, 17, or I guess only 16.
For one additional, for one additional instructional player, basically. So I'll second that if it's no, no second. So anybody have comments on this? Sorry.
No, don't, we do, I, well, you, you have to play with both policies now. Because if you're adding that to your player, that solves one policy, but then you're breaking the other policy about you can only play one sport and, because it, to allow.
Well, yes and no, I guess. Because if you're waiving that first policy...
Right.
It, it sort of supersedes or whatever the other policy, you know what I mean?
So does the second policy state that as long as each player gets on a team, that person's allowed to play both sports?
Yes, I believe it's only if there's cuts.
Okay.
Then that person, the people, the persons that would be cut would be the persons that, you know, have...
Right. So I think we wouldn't come under, under the purview of the second policy if we waive this one.
So I, I'm hearing, I think, in maybes, and...
We have to look at.
I, I really don't. Again, we, we have an issue. I appreciate the issue. I personally like to have both policies in front of me. But I, I'm going to tell you what I think about the policies, and I fought this battle before, and I'm perfectly happy to fight again. There is a remarkable difference, in my opinion, between K through eight and high school and college. I personally feel that if we're going to have sports in K through eight, just about practically, maybe every student that wants to play in that sport should be allowed to. Taxes are being paid by parents who have the best kid in the state, and taxes are being paid by parents who have perhaps the worst kid in the state in baseball or soccer or whatever we have for sports. In K through eight, I firmly believe that at least until eighth grade, even that child who's not really good in sports should be able to partake in a team camaraderie that is really hard to get elsewhere. So I'm for letting, if 40 kids want to play soccer, or whatever the sport is we're talking about, and we're going to have sports in this, soccer in this school, then I frankly think all 40 kids should be allowed to play soccer. And I think the policy should be changed to say that. No. If that costs us some money and, and, but, you know, if sports is important, it's as important to, and I'm, I'm kind of getting personal in my family, to a kid who drowned at three years old and had a little bit of a sports problem, a, a motor skill problem, but is, but won an award at Co-Brown for being the biggest sports enthusiast in the school. And he should have been allowed. And finally, he was allowed because there wasn't enough kids. But he should have been allowed to play sports. And maybe he didn't get to play all day. Maybe he only played once in the whole year. All he wanted to do was be a part of a team. And that was held from him. So that's what drives the way I think. If 400 kids out of 400 kids want to play soccer, good for them.
Yeah, but we don't have 400 uniforms for them. That's the problem.
No, in this, in this case, we do, though. I mean, we're not asking for 40, we're asking for 22.
But if 400 kids want to play, that's, you know.
That's fine. Let's, I know, but let's talk about what we're talking about here.
I'm facetious and I have that.
I'm trying to look at the policy.
What is the precedent for 21 slots, anyway? Why, why does that number exist? I'm asking for historical context here.
Three years ago, four years ago, where they decided that they, that the teams were getting too big, that there weren't enough, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that there were, the teams were getting too big, there were too many instructional's, so they wanted to limit the number of kids.
So have more teams and have those teams play each other.
Possibly.
I don't see why you have to, like you're saying, I don't see why you should be...
We do have someone, we do have someone in the audience who might be able to answer this question if the board wants him to, to speak to it.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at Scott.
Well, I'm not allowed to talk.
No, well, we're allowing you.
Oh, okay. Is there a question being posed?
What, what, where did this number come from? 18 and then three instructional players?
It was, it was twofold. It was to control the numbers, the amount of kids that were on the team, and it was to control playing time. I, I and many of the other people on the board at the time disagreed with Tim's philosophy, that in middle school, educationally as well as athletically, is a preparation for high school. And at Co-Brown freshman year, we have a lot of parents from Northwood who go ballistic when their kid doesn't make the team because their kid was a three-year player at Northwood School. Trying to get them prepared for the realities of life after they leave here, there's a rec program so every kid can play. The school team is supposed to feel the competitive team to compete with the other schools. It's not intramural. It's not inter, you know, within the gym classes. It's a competitive team that plays in a league with other schools that are competitive. And it's just as important for kids to feel like they're on a competitive team as it, most kids, as they are on a team. There are a lot of kids that take their athletics very seriously, and there are a lot of kids that just want to play. Tim's got a valid point. There are a lot of kids that just want to play. And there are places for those kids to play that just want to play.
All right, thanks. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of granting the waiver for the boys' soccer team?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I did have, so are we going to vote on the other policy?
I don't think there is another policy to...
Isn't that kid going to be on two different teams?
Well, so here's the policy on that. I'm just, yeah. So it actually says, students may participate in two school-sponsored athletic teams during one season under the following condition. Students must have made the honor roll during the previous quarter in order to be eligible, eligible to participate in two sports. In all cases, students must be approved by the athletic director and administration. That's all it says.
Right, it doesn't say anything about cuts. I was reading that.
Yeah, it does nothing in here. So I don't know. There are some policies that have not been approved yet by this board. I know you had said that there were some that were out there, and we were waiting for them, for whatever was coming back from Barrett-Cristina. So I'm wondering if it might be part of that group, because there's nothing in here that says anything about cuts and not being able to play on two teams. So I'm wondering if we're granting this waiver on, I mean, I haven't read the whole thing, like, word for word, but it doesn't...
We're granting a waiver on the other policy, though, not on this.
The, the policy is, okay, so...
I don't even see anything in here.
This policy, JJH, is the policy, okay? In part 20, or paragraph 20, the recommended number of players per team, soccer teams, 18 players plus one to three instructional players at the athletic director's discretion.
Recommended at his discretion?
Yeah.
So he's saying he's, he's fine with one more. So if, is the waiver even necessary if that's the case?
That's a gross misinterpretation of that policy.
Well, I, I think maybe they're just being safe. Right, the administration's being safe.
I don't know. As you just read it to me, it sounded like, I mean, if that's not the way it was written, I would agree with him.
Doesn't it say one to three at the discretion?
It says one, plus one to three instructional players at, at the athletic director's discretion. It's the word.
That would be up to 21. So you would need a waiver for the policy.
Yeah.
Makes it sound like up to one to three. But, but again, the, the title says the recommended number of players per team.
Recommended, again. It's a wavery policy, for sure. You could...
Yeah.
I mean, interpretation could, yeah, go in a lot of different directions with that policy. Maybe we need to make it a little more clear, depending on...
That could be.
And as I say, I, I'm in favor of more kids playing. So I'm going to vote because to me this, yes, because I think this says more kids are playing.
Yes.
I would really love, I, I pray that some parent comes in next week who has another kid that wants to play on that team. And I would love to see if you guys turn it down.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote?
So a motion to, uh, to advise policy JJH, paragraph 20?
We're not, no, we're not advising the policy. The motion is to grant a waiver to policy JJH.
Grant a waiver on JJH, paragraph 20?
For this, for the boys' soccer team this season. That's what the motion's for right now. Allowing them to have one additional instruct, one additional instructional player beyond the three that are in the policy. So four. That's what we're voting on, so.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? So five, zero, motion passes. Okay, that's going to be quick. Could you restate, please, the, the parents for the leadership team?
Sure. So, um, paraprofessionals make up a little bit more than a quarter of our staff, and certainly our stakeholders in our building, and have a, a different perspective than certified teachers do. And given that we have interest from paraprofessionals in serving on the building leadership team, I'm hoping that the board will consider using one of the $800 stipends from REAP funds for a paraprofessional to sit on our building leadership team.
I'll, I'll move that. Any second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
So, yes, I'd like to discuss it. I, I have no real problem with having a para on the, um, team. Paras are different, a lot different than a teacher. Their education, their everything, by the, for the most part, is considerably different. So if you wanted to put a para on there at $400, I would have no problem at all. They make far less than half of what a teacher does. And to give them the same as a teacher to be on a team makes no sense to me.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. It's like, I feel like the, the, but, you know, I don't know that that's our, well, I mean, I know it's our decision to make because we hold the purse strings or whatever, but if the recommendation from Ms. Young is that they're all going to be doing pretty much the same work, because I would assume that this paraprofessional is not going to be overseeing, well, overseeing what, what a, what a teacher does, they'll be more overseeing what other paraprofessional does in a leadership way, the same as the teachers would be doing. Because I can't imagine that, you know, like, for me, an LNA would come in and be overseeing what I would be doing as a nurse, you know, so if, as long as the paraprofessional will be overseeing a paraprofessional, but that's her decision to make.
This is not an overseeing or a supervisory position. This is more of a leadership team of, of, of making sure that all of the staff in the building has representation. The expectations are going to be the same, the duties are going to be the same. It's much the same as we, we pay X number of dollars for a basketball coach or a soccer coach or whatever. And we may have somebody with national certifications as a soccer coach, and we may have a parent that is filling the position with, with no certifications, and they're still doing the same job. So in this particular case, I, I would support the $800 because the expectations and the outcomes are, are equal for whoever's on doing those.
Or more so in the sense that there will be multiple teachers who will have sort of smaller groups that they'll be representing, whereas this one paraprofessional will be representing all K through eight, 20-something paraprofessionals that we have, so.
I think having diversity on the leadership team is a great idea, too.
I think it's important to have that paraprofessional perspective, honestly, on the team.
Yep. And, and I mean, they're going to be doing the same number of hours as anybody else on the team's going to be doing. And so, yeah, I'm in favor of that as well. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Four, one. Motion passes. I think that's all the motions you wanted from us, right?
So we can talk about smarter balance.
Right.
So I broke the preliminary data up for you in a, a few different ways, just so you could see. And I included the state data so you can see overall what the trends were at the state. And certainly, there were some areas where we went up and some grade levels where we went up, and there were some grade levels where we went down. There were also a lot of places where we were pretty consistent with the state. And I just want to point out that when we went up, usually, we went way up. You know, you've got single classes who last year were, or the year before, were at 48% of the students were proficient or above, to 68% the following year of students in that same class proficient or above. So that really is a tremendous gain. We certainly don't see those gains across the board, but the fact that there are pockets of, of really strong gains like that is very encouraging and promising.
Can I ask you a quick question about this?
Sure.
When you're going from the 14, 15 to the 15, 16, is this following the same class or is this the same grade level?
So it's broken out in a couple of different ways. So if it, if the row starts with class of 2025 or class of 2024, that's that same group of kids and how they performed those two years.
Okay, I guess I was wondering on the, the other page, will you have the proficiency for grade?
So that's grade level. So that's same teachers, probably, or-ish, but different groups of kids.
So, so the ones that were in 14, 15 are now the next grade level, 15, 16?
Right.
Okay. Thanks. All right.
So overall, if you were to average out the gains, the state, for example, in math remained at the same 48.8% on average students per proficient or above. Northwood School went up, eight, had an 8% increase. They went from 39.8% average proficient or above in 14, 15 to 43.2%, which is an 8% increase. And then in ELA, I came up with 13, sorry, Keith, not 14. So the state had a 4% increase, and Northwood School had a 13% increase, or 14, if you use Keith's numbers. So, again, even though there are grade levels where things went backwards a little bit, overall, things went up. In math in particular, the trends were pretty consistent. So when the state went down, we went down. When the state went up, we went way up. ELA, it was a little bit more, there was a little bit more variety. There was some trend following, and then some in the upper grades not. So when the state went up, for some reason, we went down. So I think overall, these results are really encouraging. I would say that coming out of these, what we would really want to focus on would be to continue with our RTI implementation, continue with our program implementation, Go Math wonders and foundations, and really with an eye towards assessing those programs and making sure that we know their strengths and weaknesses and that we're supplementing any areas of weakness in them. That we continue to develop curriculum in addition to... weakness in them. That we continue to develop curriculum in addition to those programs, particularly in the grade levels and subjects where we don't have structured programs. That we continue to focus on increasing and approving our use of best instructional practices. And also that we continue to work on making sure kids understand sort of how to take the test and how the test is structured, so their test literacy.
Thank you. Anything else for your report, or is that it?
I think that's it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Young over here? Nope. Okay, thanks. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, I'll start on page thirty-two. And this is for a mentor stipend for Lynn McDonald for our newly hired guidance counselor.
That's just information, right?
Yeah, these are typically informational, the mentors.
Okay, if you want to do those, that's fine. The other piece that I just handed out to you, the new personal report, you'll see that separately. We've got a resignation of John Skomerski, part-time custodian, and the letter is with that.
We just hired him, correct?
That's correct.
Motion to accept the resignation of John Skomerski.
Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the resignation?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We've got it posted, and we'll move as quickly as we can. And the other is for Jody LeBrie, for the PD Coordinator for Certified Staff.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
PD Coordinator?
Professional Board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-zero.
On page thirty-three, you have a parent request to allow their child to start school with us. I do have purchase and sales agreement. If I didn't feel comfortable putting it in the packet, but if anybody would like to see those, I have those.
Motion to allow Jayden Hartigan to attend Northwood School.
That's the one we already talked about?
I think it's a new one.
This one's different.
This one has a purchase and sale that starts September fifteenth.
This is a new one.
Yeah, the other one was on a range road before December thirty-first.
I have that.
All right, so what is it?
This person, they're buying a house, and their purchase and sale is for September fifteenth, and they just want to start school now, so they're, so they're gonna, he's going to live with the grandparents, or the grandparents are gonna have custody or something.
Yeah, they weren't gonna be in by the start of school.
Yeah, so, but they have a purchase and sale for September fifteenth, so...
I mean, we don't need to see that, do we? That's awfully nosey of us.
I'll acknowledge.
It's just got the date on it.
Oh, yeah, September fifteenth, so...
Any discussion on this?
Do you want to keep it?
Was it moved to second?
My second.
All right, I'll second it then. So all in favor?
Aye.
This?
Okay, and also in front of you is, you'll see two pieces of paper from Primex. This is their cap program, which, the way your rates are set, you're in a pool with Primex. Part of your rates are set through that pool, and part of the rates are set by your individual liability and usage. And what this says is that if you get into their cap program for the next two years, you'll see that you have a maximum increase that they can go up. So it just guards against their section of the pool. If you're not with Primex, then, and you have a catastrophic year, then it could go up more than that. But this just guards against that for a period of two years to get into their cap program, for the property liability and for workman's compensation.
So what do we need to do in order to get this protection?
We need to approve Keith to sign it.
Yep, all you need is a motion to approve, and I'll have Keith sign it, and...
So they don't, it doesn't cost anything to get into this?
No.
They just offer it, and we accept it?
We're already in it. They're just asking us to extend it?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Through twenty-nineteen, June of twenty-nineteen.
Is everybody okay? Everybody have an objection to me signing the Primex things?
Do we need to vote on it, or just say, "Go ahead"? Just go ahead.
Do it. Okay.
Keith has covered.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for the superintendent?
This one or this one? Not that one, because they're not so ridiculous.
I have not gotten to them.
You can't go...
Parent request was the school.
Yes.
Okay.
Comes outside.
Okay. Any committee reports? It's getting to be about committee time.
Yes.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Shane and I met with the Clubs Committee this morning, and I don't know, do we just need to tell you what we're doing, or do we have to vote on this again? Because, I mean, there's money that's there, so they're going to take out the seventh-grade advisor, and you wrote down the other one, right?
So we both know it's fifteen thousand dollars that we have for Clubs.
All the drama.
And so, what they proposed was to drop the seventh-grade advisor, which was only ten hours, and a drama assistant, and add another eighth-grade advisor and a Spanish club. So we still stay within the fifteen thousand dollars. We're just taking away two positions and adding a Spanish club and an eighth-grade assistant advisor.
So a second eighth-grade advisor, no seventh-grade advisor?
No seventh-grade advisor, which was only ten hours anyways, and which was Mrs. Rush had took that on.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that was the proposal.
I've heard some serious concerns.
There was nothing done with that advisor thing. There was nothing ever done. I had a seventh, or an eighth grade, that was a seventh grader.
So I'm...
In past years, we actually was pushing, we pushed, the board was pushing for a seventh-grade advisor. And we wanted one because there's a lot to do in eighth grade, and there's a lot of organization that needs to happen over the summer, even before coming into eighth grade. And some of these trips are expensive. Getting a head start on things would be great. I would, I personally would really like to see the seventh-grade advisor.
Well, and I think, I wonder if the two, you know, an eighth-grade advisor slash assistant advisor, if you have two people working, that that won't make things a little bit easier. As a parent of an eighth grader, I'm not wholeheartedly rooting for the DC trip either, you know, so I think that needs to be looked at. I don't think we need to set in stone that it's going to be that. So I think there's other things to look at. I think this is something that the teachers brought toward, to us. It sounds like they've looked at, you know, they've worked with the paraprofessionals also, and the paraprofessionals are picking up the drama assistant part of it. I don't know what money is left in the drama, I mean, in the, the paraprofessional negotiated monies. I don't know if there's something in there for a seventh-grade advisor also.
One of the issues that they're having with the seventh-grade advisor is that no one stepped up to take it. So it was one of those things that was in there. We need someone to step up. No one's taken it yet. So it was, when the Spanish club came in, it was like, okay, well, no one stepped up. No one wants it right now.
I have no problem with Spanish club. I think that's great. But I think having two eighth-grade advisors and no seventh-grade advisor is a mistake. That's just my opinion on it. I think there are gonna be parents of seventh graders that want to get involved and start fundraising and stuff like that. And we need, I think we need to have that advisor in there. It's something the board has wanted in the past. I can't imagine somebody would, maybe they really like the eighth graders and want to be an assistant advisor for eighth grade, and they will refuse to work with seventh grade. That may well be, but I'd still have to leave that position open and say, hey, the money's there for someone who wants it.
I'd rather the money not sit there, you know, personally, and split it up, and at least get the eighth-grade trip going, which, you know, was supposed to be started last year and was not started.
Because we didn't have a seventh-grade advisor. Let's forget that, all right?
So one of the things that was also brought up in the committee...
We did, actually. We voted and gave a stipend to a teacher to do that, and nothing was done. So, last year.
Right.
So, no, no, not out of this. We gave the stipend to a teacher, and it was not done last year. So that's what I'm saying, is I would rather, and make sure that, you know, the Spanish is, the Spanish is going to be, you know, for more kids and everything like that than just two groups of kids. I think it's better.
Yeah, like I said, I have no problem with Spanish. I'm opposed to having two eighth-grade advisors and no seventh-grade advisor. And I think the way, this usually comes up, I mean, I believe Ms. Young will bring this back to us, maybe next week, right, to vote on, unless you guys want to vote on it now. That's how it's been done in the past, at least.
No, we're bringing this to you. We're the committee members.
Okay, so you're coming forward with this as a proposal, then?
Yes.
With the recommendation, yes.
With the recommendation from the committee, from the teachers, this is what we've come up with to supplement the Spanish and eighth-grade advisor. Reason why there's an additional eighth-grade advisor was that when Mrs. Rush was in the drama club, she was also the eighth-grade advisor. She put in numerous hours beyond what was in here allotted for, so allowed for her to do much more. She did much more, didn't allow, she did much more than she was expected. The amount of effort that goes in if they want a Washington DC trip for the eighth graders is huge. So that's why the Club Committee said, okay, we need to add an additional advisor to supplement what Mrs. Rush did for eighth grade, so...
Sorry, do you have a handout for all of us to look at all the clubs, or just...
Oh, those are the only two changes. You guys...
So it's the same clubs as last year with these changes?
Yes.
Well, no, not last year. We brought, I brought this forward earlier.
Yeah.
Whenever it was, I brought it forward with, yeah, June. So the only deletions have been the seventh-grade advisor and the drama club assistant.
This is a recommendation for modifying the process from that. Okay, my mistake, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's the, just to clarify for me, because I was confused. So it's eliminating the seventh-grade advisor and adding both a Spanish club and an eighth-grade advisor?
Correct.
Assistant eighth-grade advisor, okay. All right, so I'll zoom. Any other discussion? I assume we got a motion of second from this, from you guys?
Yeah, a motion to.
Any discussion from the side room? Sorry. All in favor of these changes?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, four-to-one. I'm sorry, was that an aye or a no for you?
Aye.
Yeah, it's a four-to-one. I voted no.
Oh, so he voted no.
I voted no.
I'm used to being the only one.
That's why I left.
Anything else for the Clubs Committee, then?
Yes, sorry, yes. I brought up, I don't know if it was the last meeting, the meeting before, but I'd like to know if, or I'd like to put a motion, I guess, for the school board to do two hundred and fifty dollars, I think that was the amount that she had said, two hundred and fifty dollars for the welcome-back barbecue, to help pay for the welcome-back barbecue on September thirteenth.
Which is open house.
Yes, for the open-house welcome-back barbecue.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that? I know it's not a club thing, sorry.
Where does that money come from?
The school, we have a...
It's basically a school board supply line.
Yeah, budget and supply line. I want to just make sure that the right, that's the right amount that Kate said. I think it is, though.
Was it the right amount?
It was. Okay, thank you. Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty. Any discussion?
Sorry, no.
You guys good? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries, five-zero.
Thank you.
Any other clubs? Athletics club meet yet?
Negative.
No, technology hasn't yet, I don't believe. Budget committees must be coming up.
Not till October.
Over. Facilities? Anything going on with facilities?
The bus thing counts as facilities?
We have that in our old business, yes. We'll get to that, I guess. I don't know if it does or not, but. As far as paperwork, I've signed two more students into Co-Brown today. Seems like every meeting, we sign two more in. Okay, oh, unless there's any other committees I forgot about. If you're on a committee and you haven't heard anything, we talked about this early this year, drive it a little bit, right? We should be taking control and making sure that we're meeting. So if you're on a committee and it hasn't met, now's the time to maybe start contacting the administration or the other committee members and making that happen. Because we've had a few committees in previous years, you look quizzical.
I feel like there was something I was on, and I don't remember what it was, but there's like a calendar committee or something. I vaguely remember this.
Yes.
That doesn't usually...
Yeah, it doesn't start up until about November.
Right, right, so you'll be okay with that. In the past, we've had committees that kind of just disappeared and we never talk.
Does anyone remember that? But I didn't, I haven't heard a word from it since day one, so...
The other thing to be aware of is that contract negotiating time is coming up soon.
Blown away here.
You're terrible. You may be the best.
So that will, I think, Shane, you and I are on the para one, and Barbie and Tim are on the professional negotiation contracts, so those should start meeting soon.
And we need, I think, I said, I think we need to meet as a board to discuss what our goals are.
I was wondering if we got done early tonight. I was thinking we could have a non-meeting after, but we'll see, we'll see what time it is. If not, we can schedule something, something else, I think, so. Okay, moving on from committee reports. No new business, no old business. We're set to have a kindergarten discussion tonight. I put this on the agenda because I wanted to just talk about, I basically just wanted to come up with a, with a plan, what the board is going to do, so that we can let, yes, I you know, when it comes to budget time. The way I see things, we have like three options. We could budget for a full-day kindergarten in our regular budget. We could create a warrant article to allocate the funds to launch full-day kindergarten, or we could do nothing. My strong suspicion is if we do nothing, there will be another petition warrant article from the town. Last year, there was a petition warrant article, and some people thought because the school board didn't put forth their own warrant article, that they were not in support of kindergarten and would not use the funds for that. So my recommendation is, what I would like to see this year, is us to have actually a full-day kindergarten warrant article again, like we have had two years ago. And basically, I don't think it was something, I just want to do a straw poll and find out what people think and what they want to do for this, and so that we can prepare for it, I guess, and let the members of the public know what direction we're heading in. So anyone else want to say something about this?
Well, as I've said, I'm in full-day, I'm in support of full-day kindergarten. I mean, I'd like to know exactly what it's gonna cost out to be. I feel like, I must feel like if we do another warrant article, it's gonna fail. It's failed twice. I feel like we should put it in our budget, if that's what we want, if we feel like, as a board, that we want to go ahead with full-day kindergarten, that we should put it in our budget, and it's part of our budget, and not, not another warrant article, because it has failed twice, I think, in the last, the last two years.
Of course, putting it in the, I mean, it's risky putting it in the budget.
Right.
Right, right. I agree, I really want full-day kindergarten. I don't know that putting it in the budget is what I want to do, but I understand where you're coming from. What do you guys think of all this?
My position basically hasn't changed. The scores from the smarter balance testing once again show some serious problems in this school. I don't think, wherever you put it, that is going to pass. If you put it in the budget, I think you're just asking for a lot of trouble. That's up to you guys. I really don't care. Wherever you put it, I'm not gonna vote for it. And I'm not against all-day kindergarten. I'm sincerely not. I think that there is almost an equal amount of studies out there, mostly non-governmental, who question and show statistics about the value of, or lack of value of, kindergarten. I think there's a tremendous amount of governmental studies that show a lot of value for all-day kindergarten. I have two problems. I have stated those problems before, and I'm gonna state them again tonight. My first problem is predominantly, we're just not ready. We, seventy percent of our third grade are not proficient in math. Sixty-eight percent of our fifth grade are not proficient in math. Fifty-seven percent of our school is not proficient in math. This is intolerable for me. Adding kindergarten is not gonna help that, in my opinion. The second issue, I've addressed it before. It's a non-public issue. I'm not going to address it again. The S.A.U. knows what the problem is. At one point, they agreed with me, and that's fine. Whether they agree with me or not has no bearing on the matter. We have not resolved the issue with kindergarten. And until... And until that is resolved, I will not vote in favor, whether as a taxpayer in this town or as a school board member, to add all day kindergarten to the school, so. And that's fine. I have a right to my way of thinking. I have a right to my vote. If you want my vote, then fix kindergarten. Don't want to fix kindergarten? And that's fine with me. That, well, it's not really fine with me. I'll, I just have to accept that, but I'm not going to vote for it.
I'd just like to point out, our kindergarten scores have increased. We saw that, so I mean, you want, it's showing good signs of going in the right direction.
I understand what you're saying. I understand that I asked for, five times, I went back and checked, for the data that was never given to me for almost three and a half months, until there was new data that was available. Where that came from, I don't know. That's the facts. I can go back, you can look in the minutes, I can show you in the minutes, where I asked and asked and asked and asked for the data. They don't want to give it to me, and that's fine. I wasn't that worried about it, that I wanted to file a right to know. But until we fix what we have, taking on another, um, issue makes no sense to me.
Get it?
I haven't lived here a year yet. Um, what I've been doing, what I've seen so far, um, in the last nine months has been promising. I've seen improvements in the RTI program. I've seen some improvements in test scores. Theoretically, I am in favor of all day kindergarten. I don't know if now is the time for here. I honestly would like another year to see how the school progresses before I make up my mind on whether or not I think it's, it's time. So, too, too new to decide at this point. I feel like that's kind of a cop out, but I honestly would like to see more results and more data before I throw my support behind something I'm not sure if I'm a hundred percent behind.
Shane, we haven't heard from you.
I'm, I'm in support of all, all day, all kindergarten, have been and always will be. Not only with the educational or social aspect of it. Having kids, being able to socialize with other kids, finding out what issues they have, um, so you can developmentally to start them in the first grade, so you're not, you know, trying to IEP a kid or something in first grade when you can actually find out in kindergarten. So, I mean, there's a lot of things you can look at, um, and so, uh, yeah, I'm for it.
Go back, just to reiterate, if we do this, I want it done right. I want it done in a quality way. There are some grades here that are not performing up to standards, and that's disheartening, to say the least. So like I said, if we're going to do this, I want to see it done the right way, and I don't know if we're in a place that we're ready to handle that. I don't know.
So, um, just to send the, the signal to both the public and to the SAU to get ready for what we're going to decide, I'd just like to do a straw poll saying what our plans are, what our plans are going to be. If it came down to it, to vote for it, what would we do?
To vote for what exactly?
Well, that's what I'm asking, right?
For voting for putting full day kindergarten.
When it comes down to it, we're going to have to decide. We're going to have to decide at some point, are we going to put full day kindergarten in, in the budget? Or are we going to make a separate warrant article for it? Or are we going to do neither of those things, right?
It doesn't seem that the town is going to support a warrant article. It's failed two or three years in a row, from my understanding. I wasn't here to see the other two, just this last one. I'm doing worse each time.
The first year was, actually was pretty close.
And now it's doing worse every time, so I think that if the school shows some results.
Part of the reason supposedly, that I heard last year that people were against it, was because the school board didn't put it in a warrant article. It was a petition article. The last two years, I think, we're, we're not.
Do you really think that people put that much stock in what the school board says?
This is what, this is what I heard. This is.
I highly doubt, maybe a few people thought that, but honestly, people are looking at that as a tax burden or as a benefit to their children, one or the other.
I don't disagree, but I'm just telling you what I heard. There were some people who were very clear that they weren't, they weren't in support of it because the school board wasn't behind it, because it came from a petition.
I mean, do we, I, I think we just need to send the message, are we in support of it or not? And decide at another point where how we're going to put it in.
I was hoping to maybe, at least take a straw poll. I mean, I'm not going to hold anybody to anything they're saying today, but like, where, where are we going to be? I mean, are we going to, are we going to, number one, I guess the first question, yes or no, are we going to, are we going to do something for, for that kindergarten?
I say yes.
I think I say yes to you. I assume you say yes. So we're going to do something. You guys, yes, no? No, that's no.
I abstain. I don't know yet. I don't know.
Okay, so we'll, we will do something then, if, if the vote comes down to the way we're talking today. The second part.
Something is very vague, though.
Yes, well, I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
The, um, next part of that is, if we're going to do the something, is it the something going to be, put it in the budget, the operating budget, or create a warrant article, a separate warrant article for it?
So, on that, on operating budget, I'd like to, when it comes budget season, which is right around the corner, if we are going to look at eliminating a position, um, and adding.
Adding full day kindergarten as a.
As, to make it, and then whatever, whatever we want to do. I mean, there's so many different things that we have, we can manipulate the budget wise, that we could add it. So, um, if not, then we'll put it as a warrant article. I mean, we have to look at the budget.
Okay, so, so you don't, you're not sure which way you want to go with that, is what you're saying, okay?
I think if you put it in the budget, the budget will fail.
I think it's a possibility of that. That's why, that's why I prefer the warrant article approach myself. I'm, I'm in favor of doing a warrant article, just regardless. If we are able to eliminate positions and lower our budget, great, then we should do that too, if, if we can, but, um, what do you think?
I'm in favor of putting it in the budget, but I'm just in favor of full day kindergarten period. I don't care how we get it out there. I just want it out there. Whether, I don't care which way we do it.
Alright.
I don't have anything against you putting it on a warrant article. I honestly don't think it will pass. I mean, it's been pretty clear, like you said, if it's going year by year and it's doing worse every year, I hate to see that happen again, but I also don't want to see the budget fail because of that being in there.
I agree with you, yeah. That's, that's kind of where I'm standing on this as well.
So putting it in the budget seems a little dangerous.
Okay, so I think the conclusions to be drawn from this is we will look into how exactly we're going to do it. I think we're going to at least investigate moving forward with full day kindergarten, one way or another, whether it be either a warrant article or a, putting it in the budget.
We'll, we'll get you a cost as to what a teacher will cost, a paraprofessional for that, that classroom. I think that's what we've done in the past, as well as any, uh, supplies, uh, furniture, those types of things, so you'll.
It doesn't change. This is going to be a hundred and six thousand dollars.
Right around there, right around there. But in addition to that, if there's any point in time that you'd like to, um, see support, um, for kindergarten, we'd be happy to put together a presentation along those lines. I don't know whether that's going to be information that, that people will find useful or not. If you would, then we'd be happy to put that together.
Um, I got to ask again. I ask every year, and I always get told no, but can we factor in this, the cost savings for the kindergarten bus not being needed?
I'll check.
I mean, I know we're, I think we'll be two years into a three-year contract, so.
Right.
We may not be able to, but if you talk it down, maybe we can figure something out.
Okay.
So I think getting it down, getting the cost down lower would help, if we could. Are you very happy with that? Are you going to move on? Happy enough? Uh, strategic planning update. Do you want to bring us through that?
Yeah, in front of you, you've got a summary sheet. The RFP went out. As you can see, we've got four responses to it. They're all over the board, everywhere from sixty-eight hundred dollars to ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And a lot of it comes down to what work you want done, uh, how much in depth, how many meetings, the product they're going to produce, whether you want help with the action plans, the whole nine yards. So, uh, this is just the cheat sheet that I had Linda put together. I have a box here with all of the proposals. What I would suggest is that either take the proposals with you, or stop by my office and you can review the proposals, and then we'll put it on a, the next agenda for further discussion. But there's a lot to these proposals, and when you look through them, they're very, very different, so. You know, the board's going to have to decide, number one, what depth do you want to go through this? And number two, obviously, this is, this is unbudgeted at this point, so. In the meantime, I'm going to sit with Marjorie and go through, you've got some savings in, in salaries and staffing. You've got some savings in insurance and a couple of other areas, so we'll find those, those savings, and at least you'll have some kind of idea as to what you're working with. And then we can also, in a future meeting, when you know those savings, have a discussion not only about the strategic planning, but also the two-day-a-week curriculum director position as well, that we've, we've kind of got on the back burner right now.
The one that was done in your former district, Barnstead?
Belmont.
Belmont?
Yep.
What was, uh, what was the cost of that and how many days, do you remember?
I, I was, I was involved in, in conducting the, um, strategic planning process, but I wasn't involved in the RFP or the payment or anything. I wasn't in the central office at that point, so I honestly don't know. I know they had a consultant come in working with everybody, and I know they put it together. What the figure was, I don't know.
Is there any way this stuff could be, I mean, you don't have an email to binders or something like that? We couldn't get it.
Um, I, I have all of the binders right here, one for everybody, if you'd like to look at it that way. I, I don't.
One for everybody?
Uh, I've got.
We could all have one and then trade.
I've got six or seven of each, so, yes.
So I don't, you don't have, of the four, you don't have one of each four for me?
Yes.
So I would like to take them with me.
I would too.
Okay.
And I, 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 I know I've been here, um, I, I, I'm not sure that I've really heard an explanation of what exactly this is, what it may or may not do for us. I, on the other hand, having gone through the NASDAQ and the, uh, a couple of, the, the management and the special education at the, um, SAU level, um, I thought we got tremendous good from both of those. I, I, I thought that the, I don't think the money was extremely well spent. Is that the same kind of thing that we're going to be, so at, at some point, when you present the money and where you think it's going to come from, I would appreciate some kind of a better discussion as to what this is going to entail, what it's going to do for us, et cetera. I understood the special education one, I understood the management one, um, what is a strategic plan going to do for us, so. And I don't mean right now, to be honest with you. I, I just would like to have a little better understanding of that.
Just, just keep in mind that this is not an evaluation. This is not an assessment. If you look at the NASDAQ report and you look at the special ed audit that we did, those were both evaluations, assessments. They, they, they critique what you were doing, what we were doing, and how to fix it. This is not that. A strategic plan basically takes all of the stakeholders, the board members, the staff, the administration, parents, business members, anybody that wants to get involved in it, to come together and basically brainstorm, um, how to improve everything that we do, from facilities to curriculum to administration to technology, the whole nine yards. And then from that, uh, you, you go from your mission statement to your vision, and then you go ultimately down to your action plans. Okay? If facilities is one of your categories, uh, ultimately, at the end of the whole process, I would assume that we're going to come up between ten and twenty action plans. What do we need to do in the next five-year cycle, action plans to improve? Curriculum, the same thing. What are the ten to fifteen action plans that we're going to put in place? So that, that's basically, it's just bringing the entire community coming together. And again, the benefit that I see not only is organizationally, uh, helping us focus on improvement in, in all these different areas, it also goes a long way for selling your budgets, for talking to the budget committee, to holding it up to the public and saying, this is the feedback we got from you. This is what you, as a group, told us is important. These are the action plans that you came up with. And at that point in time, that really drives your budgets and everything you do with professional development, so. That, that's kind of the inclusive process. That's why you've got such difference in prices here. You know, some are going to take you through it very quickly with, with minimal, you know, you might have one public forum and then pare it down, and others are going to have multiple pub, public forums and multiple subgroups. So it, it depends on, you know, A, how much money you have, and, and B, how much in depth you want to go through the process.
Do you know anything, Dr. Kancy, about any of these four companies?
I know one of the companies. The only one I know is the Yet LLC. I know it's a, a, um, new educational consultant firm. I believe they're based out of Franklin, um, and one of the co-founders was the gentleman that did your superintendent search, Bill Leander. That's, that's all I know about any of them.
Okay, so to sum up, we're going to each, Bill, grab a binder on the way out?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put them up on the table here. You can just grab them at the end and, um.
And then you'll, you'll come back with the amount of money you think we have available?
Do you want that at the next meeting or two meetings out, whatever, whatever the board would like to do?
It might be worth bringing back also the, um, example.
Yep.
That you had from, from Belmont?
Yep.
Town, right? Yes, to refresh our memories on, on what the end result might look like.
Yep.
Anybody got any other questions about strategic planning?
It's going to be brought next meeting or two meetings?
Next meeting?
Yeah, we don't have a whole lot, so, yeah. Okay, moving on to the bus stop update. Tim, do you have information on that?
Yes, so I've met with, um, first I met with Ms. DeLisandro. She was in kind of a hurry and where it was going to take a week and everything. All of a sudden, she wanted to meet, so I did. We made at least four trips back and forth between Angela Lane and, um, Bryant Lane, Bryant Lane. She's an incredible driver of the bus, really is. I, I mean, she turns that thing around and, and quite, quite, quite well. Anyway, um, and we drove down to, um, where Bennett's Bid Road becomes a class six, which is like a block down, and Gaviat takes a right into the Gaviat Estates. Her issues are very clear, and I, I would like to really make, she's a capitalist and, and, and she absolutely said over and over, I want to do whatever you want me to do, but. So the issues are, the first time we went through, the way the bus goes now, and we tried to figure out a stop that would allow, according to DOT standards, for the lights to be seen in all directions. It's really not possible, to be honest with you. And a little pissant, in a little tiny, one of these loud cars, just blew right by us, through the yellow light. She had the yellow lights on, and just blew right, right, right through her. It just underscored the whole problem with that very funny intersection. I guess that's the best way I can put it. We went down to Angela Drive, turned around in there, um, and, and certainly, uh, again, she sees no way coming from that direction to legally and safely stop. She, we went down to, um, and turned into Bennett's. She would have to then back out of, no, excuse me, she turned into Gaviat. She would have to then back into Bennett's Bridge Road towards the non-maintained section. She's very concerned, and rightfully so, uh, that, that starts to get on a pretty good slope. So then, from a dead stop, picking up kids, she would have to pull out, and she feels that, um, buses are not very good in the snow, and she's going to have some problems. And I think underscoring, as I explained to the two ladies that I further met, and I'll talk about that in a second, there was a bus accident. One of her buses was hit some years ago, so that's always in the back of her mind. I honestly don't think stopping in that direction is an option. Whether the board wants to make a decision and try to turn the direction of the bus at this point, that will have to be discussed. So then I met, uh, last night, I think, um, with the two ladies that are, came in to see us. And again, I have to say that they're being extraordinarily reasonable. I, I think they understand the problems, and I, and I think what they're hoping for is not an immediate reaction, but that we are looking at it. They presented us, which I will give you before I leave, with some options for signage. And I really think that they agree that the only way to resolve this issue is in the next year, between now and then, to work on with Ms. DeLisandro, uh, changing the direction of the bus so that Ms. DeLisandro would be able to stop safely. They are building more houses. It's just an area that is going to have a substantial amount of kids. I really don't see a, a quick, easy fix today. I just don't. I do think it's a reasonable request that we look at and determine whether there's any big problems with changing. and determine whether there's any big problems with changing the bus route for next year. And I think that if we did that, they'd be quite happy.
So if we're gonna do that, can we add that to our parking lot? So that is something we don't forget when it comes time for the routes next year? Assuming we're not gonna do anything today?
I can do that.
And we, we really should, out of courtesy, tell Ms. DeLisandro that that's what we're doing, that, that we're gonna continue this year, but we really, we want an option from her of changing the bus route. And before you leave me, I do have another parent, or actually grandparents that called, and I'd like to discuss that too.
About bus stuff?
Yes. So, we done on the one?
Well, let's wait on that, I guess. We'll get right to that. So is everybody okay with that?
Yep, I just got some information on there. We ran the reports for the police. There's been zero accidents in 22 years at that intersection. But I do see that if the bus was to stop there in that direction, that you're gonna have those cars that are gonna fly right by and not see that. And there's only been a total of 13 accidents in the last 22 years on Sherbin Hill Road itself, so, just to throw some stats out there.
And I, I don't really know. I know Mrs. DeLisandro says certainly within that 22 years, one of her buses was hit on that road, at that intersection. We can argue with her, I, I don't have the time for it. You know, I don't, I don't know why, you know, that would be that, or et cetera.
So unless the board wants to take any action on this, I think that seems like a reasonable plan to me. We'll look at it for next year, put it in the parking lot, and... All right, what was the other issue?
Mrs. Twombly, T-W-O-M-B-L-Y, on Twombly Road, or Twombly Lane, I'm sorry, I don't know which, on, off of Lucas Pond Road. She called a number of people and then called me. What her concern is, so, right now, the bus is going towards Nottingham on Lucas Pond Road. It, I believe stops and picks up kids. Then it backs into Twombly Road, holding up traffic all of that time, and then pulls out and goes back towards Northwood on Lucas Pond Road. Her request is, and I think it's quite reasonable, Twombly Road is a, an extremely short road. Maybe two blocks, maybe, I'm, you know, depends on what you're talking, it's a very short road. And at the end of Twombly Road is a very large turnaround. So you go down and follow around either way and can come out. She thinks, and I agree with her, that not only it would be quicker, but far more safe for the bus to turn on the Twombly Road, at the turnaround, pick up the kids, continue out, and then take a left on Lucas Pond Road. And she would like us to consider that. I went home, got my stopwatch, and timed it. Keep in mind, I'm just in a pickup, I'm not in a bus. I see 10 seconds difference between the two. And at 10 seconds difference, I see a couple of kids that don't have to walk in the snow quite so far. This is a town-maintained road, by the way. This is a town-maintained road. I see not stopping and holding up traffic on Lucas Pond Road while she does her turning and goes on her own way. I think the board should consider that.
Has this been brought forth to Deb?
No, I, I, yeah, that's, and so I think it should be brought to Deb, and, and we should, you know, look at that. She brought it to me, it was after I had my, my runaround with Ms. DeLisandro. It's just something to look at. To me, it was a reasonable request.
I can call Deb tomorrow morning and, and fill her in on that and see if she can look into whether that's feasible or not.
Good.
Might not even need any action from us if she thinks that's fine to do? If the stops don't change, I mean-
If that would be an easy change for her to do, I don't think that-
I just think she should try it, and I, I think she'd be surprised. I think it, it would be easier.
Yeah, the bus stop, Barbie, did you have? Do you wanna talk about bus stop?
I did, actually. I have a couple of different things that I wanted to talk about, sorry. I was looking for something else in the... I think that, and I don't know how this is done, but in our joint board meeting, I was talking to Nottingham, I think is where they were from, and they did get a 70, they were told they were getting a 75% reduction in their rate. It wasn't even like they had to ask for it. They were told that they were getting a 75% reduction because they are down a driver also from the same type of thing that Ms. DeLisandro is going through. But when I asked about anything that was going to be done for us, it was no, because they're adding time and, I can't remember what they- Mileage. But if you look at the contract, which I did, I went over this contract a couple of times. There is nothing in there about time or mileage in there. We pay per bus, and last, there's-
I mean, it's, it's broken out by bus, I know it says that.
Yeah, that's what we, yeah, we pay by bus.
Charged by bus, aren't we? It's, it's like a bottom line.
Right, the bottom line is per bus, yeah.
It's per bus.
I know it says that in there, I didn't realize if that was how it was billed, or if that was-
Yeah, we pay per bus, and that's how it's broken out on the side. And I don't know if anybody has ever read the contract, but there are actually, she asked for a reprieve for just the, to eliminate that one route. But if you look at the contract, there are actually, I think I have nine points in here that, per the contract, she is not following. So I don't know if it needs to come from the board or from Dr. Gudzinski, but I believe that we need to say that, and it does say in the contract that if she can't fulfill the contract, which she can't, that we would discuss or something like that. I wanna look and see what it says. But that we could get some money back. So I think that we need to ask for the money back because it's two months of, it's $8,469.60. Again, my math is not as good as Tim's, but I did use a calculator. For two months of non-use of a bus, and with a 25% reduction, that's, or giving her 25% of that, it would be $6,379.20 for us.
You're saying if, if we got the same discount that-
Right.
That they did not-
A 75% reduction.
Which may, I mean, who knows if that's appropriate in our case, but, no, I understand. That's where you're coming from, yeah.
I, I like to think about things a couple of weeks before I-
Never thought that.
Sorry?
Never thought that you would think about that.
Mrs. DeLisandro wants to breach a contract. It's, it's really plain and simple. It's going to save a lot of money to not have an extra bus running around this town, and, and so on and so forth. We are absolutely due a refund for whatever that period. I think the clear way to handle this is to ask Dr. Gudzinski to look into it and work out an equitable deal that benefits everybody. I think it's only fair. She needs to breach a contract. I'm not, I'm not unsympathetic, I'm very sympathetic. There is, right now, in the buses, all of them are behind the curve, there is a tremendous amount of part-time jobs right now. Everybody, including, every time I get a chance, I say, "Well, why don't we hire a part-timer so that we don't have to pay all of the benefits?" And many, many companies are doing that. So right now, it's an employee's market on part-time jobs. They can be far more selective. If you think about a bus-driving job, that's a tough job. You know, dealing, it, first off, the hours are horrible. It's, it's a couple hours in the morning or whatever, it's a couple hours in the afternoon. If you are willing to give up your family life, you can get some jobs to, or some runs to sporting events, et cetera. You're dealing with kids, it's a big bus, a lot of responsibility, and they're paying like $9 an hour.
We're trying to attract bus drivers.
I understand what you're saying. My point of this is that they are behind the curve. They're gonna have to up the money a little bit. And, and that's the problem, you know, so, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't have an answer. Well, I do have an answer. I think what we should do is propose to Mrs. DeLisandro that we're via bus company and hire our own buses, bus drivers. And I'm serious.
Well, and the other thing that I would like to discuss at some point is, and I don't know if the discussion should be had now or in a month or so, but is that bus that we're not using right now, is it really needed? I mean, I think, you know, I think we need to hear from parents and things like that. Is it, is it needed?
I can tell you right now, because I'm, I'm one of the groups affected, that bus is packed. It is packed to the gills with kids. And some of these kids, I was on the schedule, have like 50 minutes rides.
Which the contract says that will not happen.
Right.
I, I don't think, I, I think people have understood that we have a short-term issue. You take out that bus, I'm gonna skip some school board meetings.
And that's fine, I mean, my kids don't ride the bus. I choose not to have my kids ride the bus for a certain-
I understand, but, you know, I was here the last time we wanted to take out a bus. I mean, it was awful.
I think we added a bus.
Well, we did, but now we're not adding that bus in. And what happens if this person does not pass mid-September?
We were screwing up their lifestyle.
If this person does not pass mid-September, we could still be in the same boat, though.
So, I think Tim had a really good idea and, and that we should instruct the superintendent to talk to the bus company and try to negotiate a, a deal.
Bring it back to the next meeting.
And I'd like to say too, as Tim has pointed out, we need to read policies. We need to read contracts. It says in this contract that we will vote, we will give approval for every bus driver. Have you ever seen the bus drivers' names be brought to the board? No. So I think we need to read our contract and know what our contract says also, because there's a number of things in there that she's not doing on her end either.
On your to-do list, Bob.
I'm completely baffled that we're paying for a service we're not getting. And I understand her mileage we're adding to one bus, hence the 25% that should totally cover that little bit of extra gas for the other buses. I don't understand why we're paying full price for something that we're not getting.
She tried, she was hoping to win. I don't blame her.
Good job, Barbie.
Well, and that, I did, I didn't wanna fight it that night because I did not know what our contract said. If our contract said that we would pay her for mileage or extra time, then I, I would have backed off, but that's not what our contract says.
Yeah, that's why, I really like the idea of having discussions and getting the background information and coming back to make decisions anyway. Like, I wish we did that more, so we could do more background information like this.
And again, there's nine things in our contract that are being not looked at, not being done correctly on both ends. I mean, we're not saying to her, "You need to bring us..." Well, we are by her signing the contract, but we're signing it too and not demanding-
But if that's the contract that she has, and she hasn't been performing those tasks, I mean, we can't do them for her.
Right.
It's her job to, to do what it says in the contract.
Right.
All right, Bob, you clear on what needs to be done here?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion?
We're done.
Okay. There was not. Next on our agenda is superintendent goals. As part of the joint board, the joint board puts together goals and does evaluations for the superintendent. It is up to us in our, we've decided kind of at the joint board level that a lot of the footwork should be done in our local meetings, because there's more of us here at the local meetings, and it's more focused to our school. And we actually end up doing the evaluation locally. So, one of the things the joint board would like to see from us, each, each board, is a list of goals, so that we can come, bring them all together and similarly, send them at the joint board meeting. So, we have time in our agenda here for, for doing that, coming up with goals that we will be giving to the superintendent for his job that he will then be evaluated on later November. Do you know when the evaluation is?
It's changed so many times. I, I believe it starts-
October 15th.
I believe it starts in October, and then goes through, I think it finalizes in November and December.
So I think we did a little bit of this informally earlier in the year when we had our goals meeting, as to what we wanted to do with the school. Those would probably translate to the goals that we would like out of our administration, I would think. So I don't know how much people remember that. We could dig up the minutes, perhaps.
Do you want goals tonight, or you don't want us to think about it?
Well, I don't know. Whatever, whatever people wanna do. If people wanna take a week and think about it, or two weeks and think about it, come back. We could do that.
I'm just thinking that if he's getting evaluated on October 15th, that they're setting goals right now for him, he can't get anything done.
Yeah, Dr. Gudzinski brought that up in the joint board meetings, that, you know, you can't give me goals, you know, two weeks from the day.
Right, we're way behind, we're way behind on this, no doubt.
So, but I think we need to start putting those goals in place, so, for next year.
For next year.
And it's, I think it's a working, living, breathing document until it's set in stone that, hey, these are the goals you're gonna face October 15th, 2017. So.
I mean, curriculum is one of the biggest ones, I think, that we've all discussed.
Right, I mean, that's-
That's not a goal, just to say-
Curriculum development.
Make curriculum great, I mean, like, that's not a-
Not make it great, but curriculum development. We don't have-
I'd like to see achievable milestones in that directive, though, to just say, "We would like you to improve curriculum," is not giving us something that we can measure.
I'm not even saying improve curriculum. We're saying curriculum development, period. We do not have curriculum, so we need it developed. We need, you know, him to lead-
Measurable goals, right.
Well, measurable goals are always good for any, any objective, yeah.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, also, Bob, you can't say curriculum development for the whole school, K through 8, in every subject. I mean, I don't think that's an achievable goal in a year.
Well, it, it, it goes in steps. I mean, curriculum development and then, and then curriculum benchmarks, it comes down to, I think, you know, Tim famously quoted me as saying, "I don't have time for that." I don't have time for that. You've got me 13 hours a week, combined with other school districts, you know, and realistically, that comes down to 15 or 20 hours a week. But it's impossible to do the legal stuff, you know, all of the management that needs to go along with it, and do the curriculum. I, myself, will not be doing the curriculum. What I will be doing is setting a course of action to get the curriculum done. Whether that's a curriculum director, whether it's stipends, whether it's professional development for our staff, organizing professional development days, whatever it means, that is my job. That is my job to make sure that whatever goals the school board sets forth, I'll get done. It's much the same as if you, if you've got facilities improvements, if you've got a leaky roof. My job is not to go up there and fix the roof. My job is to make sure that the roof gets fixed. So, you know, keep that in mind when the goals are, are developed. It's my job to make sure that somehow there's a process set in place to make sure that those goals are achieved.
I'd like a chance to actually draft some ideas and bring them back to the board, to just, just start with a blank piece of paper, with nothing. Tonight is not really conducive. I'd like us all to think about it and bring back, like, an actual piece of paper that says something that we can talk about, has something we can talk about, give us something to react to.
So I did some little research on this. Google works great. Why recreate the, you know, re-event the wheel when it's right there? So many superintendent goals, superintendent objectives, whatever you wanna do, and so many things pop up that, and you just gotta read it and pick and choose which ones are the best. And I recommend doing that. There's tons, tons of ways to, you know, set goals for the superintendent, so.
And keep in mind, when we set these goals, it's like, you know, we, we'll put them in some sort of priority order, and it may mean that some of the stuff that, there's only a limited amount of resources in the SAU. So it may, may well be that some of the stuff that we've been taking for granted might not get done in favor of our new goals. That's, that's why, that's how it's gonna have to be.
And to caveat of what Dr. Gudzinski was saying about he can't, doesn't have time for it, it's because he's not supposed to do the curriculum. He's supposed to, like, one of the goals is implement balanced leadership within the district to develop curriculum. So he's the one, you know, he says-
Sure. Like, curriculum development is a goal of, of the board, but like, for individual is, is the providing leadership.
And overseeing it and supervising it and redirecting them.
But ultimately, it is my job to make sure that it gets done.
Yes, I'm not taking anything away from you.
No, I'm just, I understand.
So, sounds like people don't wanna do this tonight and would like to think about it and bring it back to the next meeting and write down their, their goals and do some research? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'd like to request that each board member bring something, though, to the next meeting. Even if it's just a couple of suggestions. I'd like to see, like I said, just something that we can discuss, instead of just-
I would love to see you write down what you think your goals are as well, your current goals, right now. Because then we'll put it all together and hash it out. I think that'd be great. I mean, I know you probably have some informal idea, right?
When we had our meeting before, to my mind, not one thing we discussed was resolved, including the goals. So I know what Bree's goals are, I know what yours were. I can go look at the minutes. I know what each of your goals were. But we never narrowed that down to what is the board's goals. But we never narrowed that down to what is the board's goals. Of, of, of those, obviously, I probably had something that wasn't important to you, you might have had something that wasn't important to me, but we never really finalized and, and come up to, these are our, our joint boards. I know that at one point, Bree was going to put something together, I forget, and I don't think she ever did. I'll get the minutes. So, all I'm saying is that, are we going to drop the ball again? And, and, and so, and, and that why bothers. So, I mean, I mean, I spent time, I know several, one brought in a PowerPoint, and all that's great, but in the end, nothing happened.
Sure, we do need to, we do need to sit down and finalize those. We should.
I think that would be a good document to start with. If we all go back and read those minutes, we could probably pull three or four goals each out of that document.
And I think those goals are also, I mean, a lot of things happened. We had a lot to take care of, because we had money to spend and stuff like that, that kind of took away from stuff. But those goals were set for our budget. Well, you know, what did we really want out of the budget, in a way? So, they were going, they were going to come up again, very shortly.
Yeah, they will. That's right, we should, we should have that in mind when we're, when we're going into budget season. Having that would be helpful. Anybody want to take the lead on this? That's, I mean, another thing we could do is have, like, a subcommittee sit down and go through those and kind of write down, formalize, the stuff we talked about.
Remember when that was?
I don't know if anyone has time to do that, I don't, I don't.
I was just going to.
If not, we'll do it in the board.
I'm going to draft something. Like I said, I'll go back to the minutes and see if I can pull out some things that make sense, but I would like to see other people bring something as well, but I'll take a shot at it.
Okay, so, we will bring back our goals for our, our what? For the board, and our goals for the superintendent, and our next agenda.
Did we have one more minute from that?
We did, yeah. Yeah, there.
Because there was a link to my PowerPoint.
Okay, any parking lot, we're onto the parking lot items, our school timeline. Club's financial support discussion, I think we're going to move that to budget time, right? If we have to make any changes there. Doesn't sound like the facility committee met, so probably no update for the CIP plan with capillary ceiling. Budget, we will get to, strategic planning, we talked about. We do have an item in here that says, "School Board Policy Books to Teachers and Support Staff Unions." Do you know if we've done that?
I think part of that is, is the, since we've got our policies online now, I think what we should do is notify the staff as to where they can access all of the policies, because the policies online are the most up-to-date policies. So, that's a, that's a little bit dated in its wording, but I think that if we let the, let the staff know that they can find all of the policies at such and such a, a place on our website, and that they should review them, I think that's what we need to do.
It's done, it's in the staff handbook.
Okay, great. So, that review of board goals, right there in September, so, this is probably supposed to be our review of our goals that we had set, to see how we're doing, but. Annual parent notification of release of directory information.
That went out. Oh, but that wasn't directory, though, was it? That was, um, pictures. That was, that was the stuff we signed, but that, well, no, it was directory too, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was all included.
I think it was directory too, that stuff you signed, your, your wife probably signed it, but I signed it.
I think it was, I think that was part of the packet.
Okay.
It all came home the first day.
And discuss budget preparation. I don't know what I do for that right now, but something to keep in mind for our next meeting, perhaps. Future agenda items, right now, what we have on the agenda for the, for next meeting are to go over the proposals for the strategic planning. Think of an update, strategic planning update, I'm not sure what that means. Go over the board goals and the superintendent's goals, and all our normal stuff. Do you have anything else that I forgot?
I'm going to bring back the estimates on the monies that you have in your budget.
That's what the other thing meant, yeah, okay.
But we can include that with.
I couldn't read my scribble.
Also, are we going to bring back, can you get a discussion on where people stand, or are we just?
I think we're okay with that. I mean, I think once, once it comes time to do our budget, then we can, we can make decisions then.
April twenty-first is where all those goals, I just went through and looked.
Thanks.
Oh, the, the minutes, April twenty-first.
I'll find it.
That's good.
I, I would like to remind the board, when Dr. Gudowski said that he would go through the budget and pick out monies available, he mentioned insurance. And I just want to remind the board that you mess with the difference between the estimated insurance costs and the real insurance costs at, at your peril. We have a gentleman's agreement with the budget committee that we would not touch that, and I, I would not vote for anything that touches that money.
I didn't think that's what you meant. I thought that you meant the insurance, like, savings with the staff coming in.
No, I'm going to identify, I'm going to identify any savings that you have in your budget, including the insurance, and then the board needs to decide whether they're going to use that or not.
Oh.
And, yes, we did have the gentleman's agreement that, that we weren't going to utilize the not-to-exceed number.
I, that's not how I, like, because of that gentleman's agreement, that's not how I thought it was. I thought we had, there was money savings because of new staff and stuff like that.
Yeah, there might be, I'll have to, that's going to be a little bit harder to dig up.
Okay, and that's fine, that's how I looked at it, not as that, Tim, sorry.
Okay, that'd be great if it brings us both, that'd be, so we could see it, that'd be great. Future meetings, we have a regular board meeting September fifteenth, two weeks from now. Joint board meeting is September twenty-sixth, hopefully we have our goals done by then, so we can report to them. And then, regular board meetings on October sixth and twentieth, with another joint board meeting at the SAU office on October twenty-fourth. As well as for a future meeting, we, the board, do need to get together and talk about what our goals are for the contract negotiations. We can do that in a non-meeting, you know, it's not a non-public meeting, it's a non-meeting. I don't know what your schedules are like, if we want to try to schedule a time to do that, or we could potentially do it now, after this meeting's over with, I don't, I don't know what people's preferences are.
No matter what you do, I'm leaving at quarter to nine. I have to pick up my daughter and Lee at nine o'clock. I could probably stay a few minutes late. I don't think, I don't know what your goals are, I know I have my goal, I've already told you what my goals are, as far as the teacher's contract.
So, if you don't mind, if, if people don't mind hanging around a little bit, maybe we can, maybe we can do it a little bit now, and then if we don't get done, we can, we can schedule another one later via email or something like that.
You can have a meeting with help me, too.
I'd like, I'd like to get your feedback. I mean, we're going to get our goals, and then we're also going to get the administration, talk to the administration about what they would like to see too, so we can kind of weave those together and figure out what we're going to do for negotiating. Closing public comment. Is there any?
Sharon Floor, Ten Lower Camp Road, special ed teacher here at Northwood, K to two. And I know I'm not going to change anybody's opinion here, I wanted to speak to full-day kinder not making a difference. And I want to give you a visual. If you, because we, here we are, a week into school, I have seen every single kindergartner. I have kindergartners who know every letter, every sound. I have kindergartners who know nothing. So, we're running a race. You have your best runners at that starting line, and they get to go. You have your kids who have never run, and you made them, make them wait six minutes. In a half-day kindergarten, we have sixty minutes to deliver two brand-new reading programs and intervention. We are not going to make up that gap in a half-day program. That runner is not going to make up that six-minute difference. And I'm putting, using that as like, six months behind. These kids that are coming in that know nothing are at least six months behind their peers. So, I just wanted to give you that visual a little bit. Again, I know I'm not going to change anyone's mind, but that's the reality. And we have kindergarten, first graders coming in, who never went to kindergarten, and are even that further year behind. So, when we're thinking about all-day kindergartening, and if we're trying to say, that doesn't make a difference, absolutely it does. And it makes a difference into first grade, and second grade, and third grade. But there's not a teacher here who doesn't want every one of our kids to be doing the best they can be, to be meeting state average, or going above the state average. And there's not, there's not a kid here that doesn't want to do that. So, it's up to us to give them the tools and the time to be able to reach that goal. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask a quick question?
That's what the same.
Well, just something she, she said. Like, she said two reading programs, I didn't understand what that meant.
So, let's, we'll do comments now. We'll do comments, you can follow up with her independently.
The foundations, two different.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Shirley, you're good.
So, I wanted to make two comments, one on the bus, I love on Angela Drive, so I'm right at that bus stop that we've been discussing. And I would like to say, I'm totally in agreement with how busy that road is. I run on that road, and I have to be, I'm constantly going like this, telling people to slow down. It's twenty-five, people go thirty-five, forty. So, it is a tough intersection. There's no way that bus can drop off coming up Sher- Sherburne Road at that intersection, it's definitely dangerous. But I, on, from my understanding, it does go the opposite way when it picks up PM kindergarten and stops at that intersection without an issue. The other thing you will resolve by coming Ridge Road and going the opposite direction is that three of the main stops, at least I know of, are Angela Drive, Knolls Way, and Bryant Lane. All of those students cross right now, none of them will have to cross. And there's several students that get off at each of those stops, so I think it would be a safety improvement, as well as we've been talking about the traffic backup right by the school. If the bus is turning down off of Bow Lake Road, there's a lot more visibility, and you're not going to have people backed up at Ridge Road waiting for buses to turn left right at the school, and competing with the mobile traffic at the gas station. So, I think reversing that route would make a really big difference next year. And then, just in closing, in the kindergarten statement, that I know that we're struggling to see improvements in math, and we're talking about second and third and fourth grade. I will say that, my personal experience, that my son repeated a lot of his kindergarten math skills in first grade when he came to Northwood. And I think that having that extra time, you will see kids who not only have that social and behavioral core through kindergarten, ready to learn in first grade, but you will see that they have more time to get some of that material in. You know, which, when she was talking about the kids who are six months behind, if they can catch up halfway through kindergarten, they can start to get some of those first-grade skills. And you're going to see that testing improvement at second and third grade, because kids aren't constantly trying to catch up by only having a couple hours that first year. So, that's all, and thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Absolutely.
Go for it.
Do I get three minutes this time?
We do, three minutes this time.
Okay.
Not, not anymore, though.
All right, two points. One, I, reading the minutes, I understand there's a reluctance on some school board members' parts to ask questions regarding special education, students, how many, where they are, things like that. I can personally attest to the matter that millions of dollars have been saved in this town through the asking of questions about the special ed budget. Not of this administration, but of previous SAU administrations, because people didn't want to ask questions, it was easy to squirrel money away. Once it was discovered, budgets dropped by hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. So, ask questions, it's your right to ask questions. You don't need names, you don't need addresses, but you have every right to know how many students are where, and what it costs for those students. Okay? Second point, you alluded to earlier, that you signed two more students into Co-Brown, seems like every week you sign two students into Co-Brown this time of year. Northwood has a problem, okay? And it's not a problem that can't be solved. Northwood is an aging community with a dwindling number of families and younger kids. Every year, you get eight to ten families that move into town for the kids to become freshmen at Co-Brown, and then after they graduate, they move out. Maybe they're homeowners, maybe they pay five thousand dollars a year in taxes for four years and give us twenty grand. We spend fifty educating their kids at Co-Brown. Each person is a thirty-thousand-dollar loss, they contribute nothing to the community. You need to make this school a magnet, so that kids and families come into the town sooner and stay. We have slashed this budget, rightfully so, for the last five years. We've had plenty of overspending that we corralled, we found plenty of cost savings. Every year for the last five years, there was enough money left over in this budget to implement full-day kindergarten, and no one would have known. Okay? All you, what you guys need is the resolve to get it done. People want it, families want it. It's not about, feel very bad for the old lady down the street that can't afford her property taxes if they go up fifteen dollars. It's not about her, it's about everybody, it's a collective, it's not one person that we're talking about. We need the resolve to get it done, and get it done.
Thank you, Scott.
Tiffany George, can you hear me? Okay. First, I want to say that there's a lot of positivity going on around here, so if you're not in the building to see it, like, you walk in, it looks awesome, so way to go, Mr. Tom and his crew with short staff, it sounds like. Everything's been positive on, from the Facebook end, from teachers posting positive comments about the first professional development days for the teachers, saying that it was the best they've ever attended. One teacher put that on Facebook. And I just think, overall, the whole climate, which is what, if that's what you're working on, that I think it's definitely shifting in a positive direction. I haven't heard, I can't think of anything negative that I've heard people saying. It's been really positive, and I hope that that continues. My kids, both in third and fifth grade, have had the best, most positive start to school that they've ever had. Both are very excited about school and happy, and it's not always the case for, at least one of my kids. I think too, as far as promoting like, a positive climate, even the fact that Ms. Young brought forward the idea of the, having a para in a leadership role, and for them to be paid the same amount of money, it says something to those people. That's twenty-five percent of our staff, and they're important here. They help all of our kids, whether or not they have, you know, a one-on-one aide, they're in the classroom. And I just think those are the type of things that, it's not really costing any more money, it sounds like the eight hundred was budgeted for, anyway. And I think those are the type of things that sends a good message to everyone in the building, so thanks for approving that. The lunch program, I don't know if that got mentioned, but.
Oh, everybody loves it.
So, all the kids are very excited, that's like the best shepherd's pie they've ever tried, and there's like yogurt parfait and all that, so, I know it's probably a lot of work on your part to hear all those different options, and hopefully, on a, you know, money standpoint, is smart, but the kids seem to be liking it.
My pigs are happier, too.
And your pigs are happier, yeah, I heard about the slot bucket, yeah, they're happy about that, too. As far as the guidance counselor goes, okay, thanks, I did ask around, like Tim said, and Stratford has one, Epsom has one. I would hear Linda McDonald has a huge responsibility for the 504 kids in K to four, so if we're comparing ourselves to other schools, I'd want to know if those guidance counselors also take on the 504s, and if they have a similar number of students in that program, because that's a huge responsibility that she takes on here. And lastly, for, as far as what Sharon was saying about kindergarten, when I was on the focus monitoring team here a few years ago, we read a book called Annual Growth, Catch-Up Growth, and talking about when those kids start so far behind that they can't ever catch up, even if they make annual growth every year, they progress one year, they can never make up the three years that they start behind. So, one idea that I'm just throwing out there for you to consider is if AM, if you don't want to support full-day kindergarten, and if AM and PM kindergarten are not full, could the students who most need it attend both sessions? the students who most need it attend both sessions? Because they really need more time in front of the teacher, like Barbie said, you know, one of her students maybe wouldn't have needed it, but one did. Thanks for your time, I appreciate you guys so much, sorry to keep you later, Tim, you gotta run, thanks.
Boy, if I got things that I'd liked bussing, goals, staffing issues, budget prep date, but I'm gonna focus on two things. Since kindergarten is a big deal right now, and there was discussion over Warren article versus putting it in the budget, at the budget committee level for the last two or three years, the reason that a lot of the budget committee members did not support the petition Warren article was because we did not believe that the school board was supporting it, that the school board had any kind of an action plan ready to go if the town voted for it, and therefore, money would be raised if it passed, that would never be utilized. So, my suggestion to you, I agree, don't put it in the operating budget, it can create a problem with the operating budget, but if the school board presents a Warren article for full-day kindergarten, if the school board presents that to the budget committee to begin with, and then to the town at large, this is what we're gonna do, this is what we need, this is what's gonna happen. I think you'll be surprised, I think it will pass, because then there's a plan, it's not a wish from a group of petitioners who are putting it forward again. So I would urge you to strongly consider getting your ducks in a row, get your plan. If it doesn't pass, then you know, the town is not in favor of full-time kindergarten at this time. But you won't wonder, did it not pass because we weren't supporting it, it came as a petitioned article. So that's number one. Number two, I was rather surprised to not hear anything about this subject, is I'm hearing about the scores for the, the testing, and how low they were, and I was quite perturbed with those, and I don't know if they were copies you can pass around. Recently, Newsweek did a survey to come up with the top 500 high schools in the nation, and they had various criteria, such as performance, specific data related to student success, they looked at the number of counselor FTE, college acceptance and enrollment, SAT and ACT participation performance, a bunch of different testing. There were three schools in the state of New Hampshire that made the top 500. The first one was number 44, it was the Academy for Science and Design out of Nashua, which I understand is a charter school. Number 301 out of 500 was Hollis Brookline High School. Number 361 out of 500 was Co-Brown. I was kind of expecting to hear, hey, we've got a great high school, we tuition our kids do. I don't wanna hear anything anymore about how much money it costs to send our kids to high school.
Did you finish up?
Out of every high school in this, in this country, 500 top, and we weren't even 500, we were 361. They're doing a hell of a job, if our eighth graders are at 50% proficiency in math, to be one of the top 500 when they graduate.
Thank you. No, no, I, I wanna hear, it's just three, it's three minutes. That's, that's the policy, we have a policy that says three minutes. I apologize for that, I know I cut off Tiffany, and Scott, and you on this. I, as much as I agree with you in this case, I was told that I couldn't, it's, it's an impact of free speech, if you cut off people you disagree with, and not the people you do agree with, right? So that's why I'm trying to be consistent with this. So I, I really apologize, I'm not cutting off anybody off because I disagree with you, I'm really just going by the timer, I really am. Yeah, yeah. Have you talked already?
Yes.
But earlier, not this time.
Okay, no, okay, no, that's fine, that's fine, I just wanna make sure everybody else has a chance to talk first, that's the other, that's the other thing in the policy.
Okay. Back to the, I'm going back to what I talked about earlier with the counselor. Both of my children have, one child has special needs, had a lot of problems with them. When he was identified in first grade, Linda McDonald was a humongous help, like, she walked us through getting the help, and, and I was just wanting to say, to what you were talking about with the 504s, getting, when a parent has that, a special needs child, and they're just finding out the, the things that come along with it, oh my gosh, what am I gonna do, how, how do I get my child the help, and that, that he or she may need, and then Linda McDonald was right there to help guide us, and so, I, I just wanted to add to that, and of how much she helped us, and with our journey, our, starting our journey down the special needs path, and how much that helps all of us in, in general, so, I was kinda just kinda adding that to her stuff, so.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak? Anyone, a board member like to take their three minutes to address things?
I would, and then I'm leaving. Sorry. The chair some time ago informed us that he had, whatever you do to make a Facebook page for the Newton School Board. Yesterday, I think, or was it the day before, getting old, I forget, I broke a longstanding rule that I had, and I had to respond to a blurb on there by Mr. McGee, and so I opened up account, I didn't do it, I had to find somebody that could do it for me, and put something on there. He just said, "impact of free speech." Well, I don't know how long it lasted, but it wasn't there very long, and it was taken down, what I put on there, so, I don't understand how that can happen, I canceled my account, and I won't go on Facebook again.
I saw it, I thought you did it, I, I didn't touch anything.
I, I...
I was gonna go, I was gonna respond to it, in fact, and then it was gone.
So, I, I just, I broke my rule, and I'm gonna make a new rule, and I'm not going on Facebook anymore, I'm perfectly happy with the sun.
What's as an administrator?
It was on there, and then it was gone.
Yeah, I did see it, I was, I was, I went to go open it up and write a response, and it was gone, so.
Have a good evening.
Sorry, Tim. Anyone else?
Go back to the discussion on kindergarten.
Sure.
It seems like there's a lot of support in this room, but this is a very small group. I would encourage these people, people who think similarly, not to make their case to the board in this venue, but to make the case in town. The town is what are the people who need convincing, I mean, if you took the vote tonight to do something, obviously, it would pass in this board. You have three in favor, one opposed, and one undecided, so, I mean, the board is obviously in favor of doing something, so people come here, and they make their case, and they make their plea, and they bring their statistics, they're not doing it in the right place. I feel like if they need to, there needs to be a public forum, there needs to be, this needs to be brought to a town meeting, something like that, people's opinions aren't being heard where they need to be heard. If this is continuously failing in Warren articles, then it needs to be discussed there, and not here.
Okay, thanks. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. You two, quiet tonight? Good? All right. That being all, oh, before we adjourn, do you guys wanna stick around for a non-meeting? Or do you wanna try to schedule one for later?
What is this non-meeting for?
So, non-meeting is just to discuss our goals for contract negotiations.
I'd prefer to have the full board here for that, honestly. I think that valuable, valuable input will be lost.
Yeah, I mean, I do know some of what Tim wants, but yeah, I definitely want his opinion as well.
Yeah.
It might be worth just talking about it amongst ourselves, too, just to get an idea of, I don't know if we're all gonna be able to get together in between, that's the only thing I'm worried about.
I mean, if we have to schedule, like, a workshop or something like that to do it, that would be, that'd be fine.
We could definitely do that. We could do that. Do we all, shoot, he left. I'm like, we should do it now, that's what we should do then, but.
Next Thursday?
What, when do we need to start meeting with the contract teams?
Well, we're, I don't think that should hold you up, because the initial meeting, whenever we can schedule, I'd like to get it going. It's just procedures and ground rules, so, that's, that's, that's not gonna hold you up, anyway.
Okay, so if we did, maybe our next meeting...
Prior or after? Let me do a priority or next meeting?
Prior would be better, so we don't get out here at 11 o'clock, but...
Could you guys do what, six, yeah, right, right.
Five, something, or 5:30?
I don't know if I can get here that early, but...
5:30? Is that enough time?
I don't know, I mean, I think half an hour should be enough time, honestly.
Is it, over 6 o'clock?
I mean, we're just gonna kinda go over what we wanna see in the contracts.
So if you just write it down before you get there, what you, you know, what you wanna negotiate.
Right, so, so maybe we look over the contracts in the meantime, so six, 6 o'clock, would that work?
Sure.
For what day?
Our next meeting, so the 16th.
So start at 16?
15.
I'll let Tim know.
Yeah, okay, 'cause we don't need a close-up.
Just a half hour early to discuss, yeah.
I'd just like to point out, and I'd like it in the minutes, of course Ginger left, but if one of the, the, in this top American high schools, counselor FTEs...
I think I have three minutes in me.
Is in here, is one of the, the, what they looked at, so, their guidance counselor FTE, I'm assuming that means the same thing as, like, my FTE.
Yeah.
So, just, you know.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, there's no need for a non-public, I assume?
No.
Okay, good. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.